All right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, November 17th, 2020, meeting of the Placer County Board of Supervisors. We will begin with a flag salute, and I will lead that off.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we will begin with the consent agenda, and all these items are routine in nature, and so we'll take them with one motion unless anyone would like to remove an item for further discussion. Any of my colleagues wish to remove an item from the consent calendar? Anyone from the public, either in person or on Zoom? No, so we'll bring it back for a motion. Motion by Supervisor Gustafson, second by Supervisor Holmes. Roll call, please.
Why get?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Euler absent. Gustafson?
Yes.
Gore.
Aye. Thank you. All right, we, as you noticed Supervisor Euler is not here right at the moment. He will be here at 9:30, and he would like to be here for the discussion of public comment, as well as we will be hearing an update from Dr. Oldham during our, Dr. Oldham, excuse me, during our board member and county exec report. So what we're going to do is we are going to take our first department item. Then we will likely take item 1A, which is timed at 9:10, probably item 2 as well. We'll see how our time moves along. So we're going to begin with item 4, which is the Lakeside Redevelopment Project Update. And good morning, Heather. Thank you for being here.
Good morning. Thank you. My name's Heather Beckman. I'm a senior planner for Placer County out of the Tahoe City office. And today I'm giving a status update on the Lakeside Redevelopment Project and seeking some guidance from your board. As you may recall, in May of this year, the Lakeside Redevelopment Project, which is a residential mixed-use project, was denied by the Planning Commission, and the applicant did appeal that denial. On September 1st of this year, your board continued that appeal item off calendar so that the applicant and staff could explore a hotel project on the property. And hotel use is something that the community has time and time again expressed that they would like to see. So since September 1st, staff and the applicant have been working diligently on this hotel concept. And to that end, county staff has been having weekly internal meetings exploring our opportunities, our constraints, and ways that we might be able to facilitate such a project. On their end, the applicant has iterated several different hotel conceptual designs. And through that process, they have determined a few things. First, in order for there to be a viable hotel project on that property, they did determine that they need a room or key count similar to what they have today. So on the ground today are 92 units, and so they'll be looking at something similar, perhaps slightly less. In order to execute that, we would need a three-story building, and we would also need to abandon the Brockway Vista Right Way, which bisects the property. In addition to, the applicants work county, and the applicant have also been meeting weekly. And so we've been doing so to further refine and evolve that project. We've also, through that process, identified several outside agency hurdles. So to that end, the county did facilitate numerous meetings with outside agencies, including the North Tahoe Public Utility District, North Tahoe Fire Protection District, and Southwest Gas. So we, staff and the applicant, we feel that we've made really great strides and progress towards a conceptual hotel project. Staff feels that the project design that has been put forward by the applicant has genuine merits, and that it can indeed fulfill many of the counties' and communities' desires in terms of the goals and visions for redevelopment within Kings Beach. But having said that, we still have a lot of work to do to further really evolve and vet and refine the project, and get it to the point that the applicant can submit a project submittal to both the county and other reviewing agencies to move forward. So with that, staff and with agreement with the applicant, we're seeking your direction on next steps, and we would like to suggest that you consider another off-calender continuance so we can further work on this hotel project. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. And I did see that the applicant, Mr. David Buquillen, is on the line. Were you to have any questions with him?
Great. Thank you very much. Let's see, we'll start with any questions from my colleague Supervisor Gustafson. There we go. Heather, you mentioned three stories. Under the TRPA Town Center Plans, three stories are allowed there, correct?
Yes, they are.
Okay, so that's not a change in anything that would be requested. The abandonment, there is one single-family residence just east of the property. And what would the plans be then if we abandoned Brockway Vista for?
So there would still be access that would be, that would provide access to that property as well as to the eastern side of the subject property were it to become a hotel?
Okay, great. So those two items. And then I just wanted to augment what your comments were, that the community wants a hotel property and strongly supports that. But our own economic studies, Placer County's own economic studies, have strongly supported that sort of development on the site. So just wanted to augment your great report. And then I have no further questions. Thank you. No other questions? Let's go ahead and open this up then to the public. I know we've got the applicant on the line. So if he would like to address us, he is more than welcome to do so. Or, yes, is he on the line?
Yeah.
Okay, double checking. Thank you.
Yes, I'm here. This is David Buquillen.
Good morning, David.
Good morning. How are you, everybody?
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, we, you know, I think Heather did a really great job of just kind of framing our commitment not only to the project but the community. We did look at several options of residential before. And then we have started to rethink it on a hospitality side. There's still a lot of work to be done, but I think the commitment from our group to continue to work with Placer County's staff and the community, we are very much looking forward to do that if we're able to go forward with this.
Great. Thank you very much, David.
Thank you.
You know, I had one question, and it looks like moving to the hotel, which is something that was desired by the community, is there any plan to incorporate other uses, like any type of retail or additional uses in addition to the hotel?
So yeah, we will have, as part of a hospitality program, we will have restaurants, food and beverage, and some retail included in that. Yes.
Great. Thank you. I noticed that we received some correspondence about the desire to have a mixed-use project, and just wanted to ask that question. Thank you. Any other one, anyone else from the public like to make a comment on this item? All right, we don't have anybody on Zoom right now. So we can bring it back to our board, and it looked like what you're asking is to have an off-calender continuance on this item, correct?
Yes.
All right.
Well, I strongly support that, and I just really commend staff and the owner for working together to try to address a really challenging site that isn't easy. It isn't easy in Tahoe to develop projects, for good reason. But I think they've really come together to address a lot of the concerns that were expressed from the community, and I really need to commend both parties. The staff has done an extraordinary job, too.
Yes, thank you.
Confer.
All right. So with that, you don't actually need a motion, but I think we agree that you can move forward.
Thank you.
Super. Thank you very much, Heather. And so next, we are going to move to our, go ahead, and we're going to move to our 9:10 timed item. As he gets himself together, we'll go ahead and take our 9:10 timed item. And then we'll go after that, we'll open it to our regular public comment and CEO report. Good morning, Michelle. So this is item 1, which is the amendment to the second amended and restated development agreement to extend the initial term Placer Vineyard specific plan.
Good morning, members of the board. Michelle Kingsbury, CDR, Principal Analyst. The item before you today, as you noted, is to conduct a public hearing to consider the recommendation from our Planning Commission for approval of the first amendment to the second amended and restated development agreement for 20 property owners within the Placer Vineyard specific plan, and move for approval the second amendment to the second amended restated development agreement for the remaining two properties, properties 1A and 4B. In total, we have 22 participating owner development agreements in the Placer Vineyard specific plan. The proposed amendment is simply to extend the initial term of the development agreement, which terminates on October 29th, 2032, to December 31st, 2050. This essentially is a 30-year term extension from now. The county has many development agreements that we've entered into with various property owners. Our longest term right now that we have is with the Regional University Specific Plan property owners, which is 35 years. We also recently approved, back in December of 2019, the Placer Ranch specific plan, which had a 30-year term. So it's not uncommon for us to have these lengthy terms. Placer Vineyard specific plan owners group provided justification for their request for the term extension, which is largely centered around the scale of the development and the time it will take to absorb. As you're aware, Placer Vineyards is our largest specific plan, encompassing over 5,000 acres with over 14,300 planned residential units. Right now, we're diligently working on processing improvement plans and maps for our first development phase ownership group. Property 1A is currently under construction, and we're hoping to issue building permits for that property early next year. We've set up CFDs to provide all the financing mechanisms related to providing revenues to support increased service levels resulting from the specific plan development. In addition, we'll be bringing forward on December 30, or December 1st, excuse me, the PVSP fee program, which would provide for an internal financing mechanism for infrastructure costs. This item was considered by our Planning Commission on October 22nd, and the commission, excuse me, voted unanimously to recommend this item for approval. We do have Kent McDermid representing the ownership group, as well as Martin Steiner, attorney for the ownership group, available as well if there's any questions. With that, I'm happy to answer anything for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. Any questions? No questions from my colleagues? So we'll go ahead and open this up to the public. I see Kent in the audience. I don't know if you want to speak, Kent, or anybody else. You do not have to. It's your prerogative. All right. And we'll open it up. Anybody else in the public, either online? Yes, we've got somebody online.
Mr. Garabedian, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. Mike Garabedian, Placer County, tomorrow. The staff report needs some more information to be complete. The recent foreclosure based on court in Las Vegas that had a foreclosure sale, I believe, on the steps or front of a public building in Roseville, I think it was. The, this, this would seem to relate to all of the issues in the viability of the project and the provision of services. The dropping of sequel mitigation, the string of those measures being dropped over time suggests that the, this specific plan might have been unwise or insufficient at the start. I mean, there have been financial difficulties, but the question is now. There was the promise, which was mentioned to me personally, the widening of Watt Avenue in Sacramento that may have disappeared. I say that because now the widening of Baseline Road was in this year's proposal for a sales tax measure to the people of the county. That, that measure was dropped when it showed that the voters would not support it. But that road, we need to have some understanding about that. But truly, the viability of Placer County-specific planning that needs some, has some answers here about the project financing working out for the, for the developers and the county. Some part of that project, I think, is going ahead, one or two properties. But we really need to have planning issues addressed as well, not just the fiscal issues. We need to know that staff time is well-spent. It might be reasonable to conclude that Placer County-specific plans mean nothing and could be changed, I mean, less than they appears, I would say, and could be changed at will. Now, public facilities for development to the north of Baseline Road have now been said to be dependent on Placer Vineyards. So is this a, is there a domino situation here? So it would be, I think, comforting to the public and important for you to know to have a more complete report. Thank you for this opportunity this morning.
Thank you, Mike. Any other public comments, either on Zoom or in the public, or in our audience? All right, we will bring it back to our board supervisor Gustafson.
I just had a question for staff. Do any of our actions today change any of the plans that Mr. Garabedian was raising?
No, this is simply a request to extend the initial term of the development agreement, and all other terms and conditions remain in effect.
Thank you.
And for clarification, right, it's an extension of the agreement, which actually was started back in 2012, and/or even prior to that, 2008, correct?
Right.
And really, they've only just begun this last year moving dirt. And so it's taken quite a while to get to this place where they're actually really ready to develop. And so to that point, I think it's reasonable to provide them an extension to give them that time to actually develop this very large project. So.
It's also important to note that this project was in litigation through 2012. So, you know, you need to take that, or the public needs to take that into account, too. And as Michelle said, the only thing that's being revised, and it's subject to a public hearing right here, is the term of the development agreement.
Thank you, Karen.
All right. Any other questions or further discussion? A motion by Supervisor Holmes, second by Supervisor Euler. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you, everyone, for your flexibility. Supervisor Euler is here with us, and what we'd like to do now is move to public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to comment on items that are not on our agenda. And just a reminder that because of the Brown Act, we are not able to take action on any of the items brought up under public comment. But with that, we'll open it up to the public, anybody in the chambers? And if not, then we will open it up to the folks on our Zoom call for public comment.
Kathleen Crawford, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments. Kathleen?
Yes. Good morning. Thank you very much. I wish to make comment this morning about the current state of COVID-19. And I did hear you had announced at the beginning that there would be a presentation later. However, I would like to object to the fact that that is not on the public agenda. And in fact, item 12A reaffirms a local emergency proclamation due to tree mortality. Now, it seems to me that public health is a lot more important, although both are equally important long-term to our county. But the fact remains is that this board has been derelict when it rescinded the prior public health emergency declaration. And I find it very, very difficult that you continue in this posture of non-enforcement. There is a Facebook posting of a public sign at the House of Oliver, "Face mask not required." The defiance for face masks in this county is remarkable. It is destructive, and it is dangerous. And I really do object to the fact that both the Board of Supervisors and the elective sheriff are not enforcing public health guidelines. And so I just want to, again, express concern, which I've had over the past several months, and really do object to this. I realize I did not give my full name at the beginning. I'm Kathleen Crawford, and I live in Roseville, California. South Placer is definitely a hotspot, and it is getting worse. And it is presenting a huge problem to our businesses. And the actions of this board have created the environment where we are now back at the most severe, widespread part of the pandemic. Thank you very much for listening to me today.
Thank you, Kathleen. Anybody else on Zoom like to make a comment?
There are no hand raises.
All right, we will bring it back. And for clarification, we actually did not agendize Dr. Oldham because we had decided as a board to have an update from Dr. Oldham at the beginning of every month. A week ago, when we were planning the agenda, we were not in the same situation as we are today. Thus, the reason we are now having an update from Dr. Oldham so that we can discuss further where we're at with the tier system. So with that, we are going to move to board member and county exec reports. Any reports from my colleagues at this point? All right, then Todd, I'll let you kick it off, and then we'll hear from Dr. Oldham.
Yeah, good morning. So we're going to hear from Dr. Oldham. I'm going to allow him to kind of give you an update of what's going on in the last day or so regarding direction from the state. And then what I'd like to do is come back, answer any questions, and speak to you briefly about what some thoughts are about the organization in general, and how we're going to deal with some, maybe some modifications regarding some of the discussions that have been stated. So I'll turn it over to Rob. I think he's on a call, and I'll let him speak to this.
Good morning, Dr. Oldham.
Hi, good morning. Thank you. Thanks, Todd. Thanks, Chair Gore, and members of the board, for the opportunity to brief you on some important recent developments in our HHS COVID-19 response. As you mentioned, when I last updated your board on November 3rd, we were talking some about the national surge in coronavirus cases with a more moderate uptick here in California, specifically in Placer County. Since that update two weeks ago, this surge has escalated rather dramatically. Many states, including California, are now setting single-day case records that eclipse the high caseloads we saw back in the summer. So nationally, I heard we saw 166,000 cases yesterday and more than a million cases in the last week. So it's becoming clear that we're now experiencing the predicted second wave. However, this wave is earlier in the season than most, and escalating much faster than most were predicting. Usually, these seasonal respiratory viruses surge mid-winter. And while this surge quickly surpassed our summer surge just in the last week, what makes this so concerning to me is that the scale could continue to grow and potentially overwhelm our public health and healthcare delivery system. However, there's, on the national landscape, there's also been some good news in the last couple of weeks. The, both Moderna and Pfizer announced vaccines with really strong effectiveness and efficacy, between 90% and 95% effective in the last couple of weeks. And both of them will likely apply for emergency use authorization later this month through the FDA, and we're anticipating potentially a vaccine arriving to some priority populations in late December, early January. On the statewide front, you know, case numbers have more than doubled to over 15 cases per 100,000, and our statewide testing positivity rate has also roughly doubled. As a result, yesterday, the governor announced that California is pulling an emergency break on the tier framework and tightening restrictions to protect individuals at higher risk of severe illness or death from COVID-19 and to help the state's healthcare delivery system from becoming overwhelmed. So as a result of that, almost every county not currently purple was moved back at least one tier yesterday, including Placer County. So 41 total counties, including Placer, are now purple in the most restrictive tier, followed by five small counties staying put, and four medium and large counties. Only four medium and large counties are not in purple yet, and they probably will be there next week. Also, kind of the part of the emergency break, this state is moving counties back just after one week of bad data, not two weeks, as was previously done. And counties are at risk of moving back multiple tiers, which some have done. And then in addition, California is requiring the counties move, that do move back, that we make changes urgently within one day, as opposed to the three days under the previous tier framework to make those transitions. In recent days, also, the state has released holiday guidance and issued an out-of-state travel advisory to slow the spread of COVID. There's also talk that the governor may be considering a curfew advisory and encourages residents to try to get home by 9:00 PM in order to curb COVID spread at bars, nightclubs, and gatherings. So here locally, we've also seen a dramatic escalation in cases. In the last week, we've seen our numbers of cases and our testing positivity rate almost double. The number of patients in Placer hospitals due to COVID has also more than doubled, has had the utilization of our emergency medical system for cold and flu symptoms. And now we're monitoring several outbreaks at local skilled nursing facilities. We have regular communications with the leadership of our local hospitals, including, we touched base with them yesterday evening. And while they have seen the number of patients hospitalized due to COVID more than double, as I mentioned, COVID patients still represent less than 10% of their total bed capacity. So they're still in good shape as it relates to beds. They're still, seem to be in good shape with respect to supplies of personal protective equipment. And just wanted to reiterate, our hospitals and medical offices have become really experienced experts at treating COVID and also at keeping patients with other conditions seeking care safe from COVID. So one of the points I want to emphasize today is we continue to urge everyone not to delay medical care due to concerns about contracting COVID. In addition, we're getting lots of questions about the source of growth in cases. Public health, as I reported a couple of weeks ago, we have, in the month of October, noticed that the share of positive cases who reported attending a large gathering during their infectious period has been higher recently than in other months of the pandemic. And also that household transmission has continued to be a challenge, with almost half of our cases reporting being in contact, having close contact with a known positive. As I mentioned, we've also had the number of, increase in the number of cases at skilled nursing facilities. So those still aren't really driving the uptick, but they're becoming a more significant part of our picture in Placer County. After a pause, really, we had those skilled nursing facility outbreaks at Bay about a month ago, it looked like. There's also, so as far as where they're not coming from, well, we don't have compelling evidence to support the idea that large outbreaks are happening in schools, and that they're certainly not driving the huge surge in cases that we've been seeing. We have had some, observed some cases among youth, but actually, in-person learning does not appear to be a major factor in the transmission among youth. In addition, people are asking about some of the other businesses and how much of a role they're playing in local transmission. As I mentioned at the, at the last board meeting and in our adjudication, it doesn't look like we have clear evidence that our currently restricted businesses and organizations like restaurants and places of worship are significantly driving local transmission. But with that said, despite the incredible work of our case investigators and contact tracers, really, COVID case investigation and contact tracing has significant limitations. And so we can't just say definitively where, you know, we know that the, one of the most common responses is we just don't know where the transmission came from. And studies that have used cell phone geo-tracking have shown an increased risk of COVID transmission in some of these public environments, which I think is why the state included these restrictions in the tier framework. On our tier assignment, last week, we considered submitting an adjudication request if our testing positivity had remained in the orange tier of the state framework. Yet we changed course since our testing positivity is now in the red, and the state has indicated that counties will be moved to a restrictive tier even during the adjudication process. Though before, kind of adjudicating would buy us a week, in this case, it wouldn't. We've expressed concerns to the state about some potential unintended consequences, both economic and public health consequences of further restrictions. And I do believe the state is considering making some adjustments to the tier framework. But for now, we're employing our community, imploring our community to adhere just to the basics, wearing a mask when in public, keeping your distance, avoiding gatherings, which I understand especially, is especially tough during the holidays, trying to avoid spending time together with fam, from family and friends. But it's something that, you know, we're really trying to get people to reconsider and ask, you know, ask our community, consider safer alternatives and steps people can take to lower the risk of transmission. So thanks again for the opportunity to provide this brief update. We'll plan on a more comprehensive update, as planned, at your next board meeting on December 1st, or whenever you invite us back. I hope we can share some better news at that time. Mike Crimero, our public health manager, helping to lead our COVID response, I believe, is here with me on the Zoom call this morning to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Oldham. Appreciate the update. We'll start with questions. Supervisor Euler.
Rob, thank you, and I would thank my colleagues and the public for being willing to have this conversation when I arrived, as opposed to before I got here. Thank you very much. Rob, I heard you say, as I heard the governor say yesterday, in response to a question from an AP reporter who asked him about the shutting down of businesses when there is no, as you indicated, no definitive tracing evidence that shows the businesses that are most affected by the shutdowns are the source of transmission. most affected by the shutdowns are the source of transmission. However, Sacramento County, at the time that we were looking at going from orange into red, Sacramento County was already red, and they were appealing the decision to drop them into purple, and in fact, they were asking for businesses, their businesses, to be allowed to stay open citing exactly this. Is that not the case?
I have not read Sacramento County's adjudication request, but just in talking with them, that was one of, one of their concerns, and I will say, actually, in our adjudication request, we cited some of those concerns as well.
And more importantly for me, are you aware of a single county that was already in the most restrictive tier, the purple tier? Are you aware of any county that was already in the purple tier that is not experiencing a similar spike that we are experiencing right now?
No, I don't think so. I think all the counties previously in purple have remained in purple. In fact, just about, like I said, I think 90-plus percent of the state's population is now in a county on the purple tier, including, I think, all of the heavily populated counties that have been in purple for a while.
I think the point I'm making is that while some, including our previous caller, would like to try to draw some kind of a connection between the spike that Placer County is experiencing with the fact that we were in the orange tier and our businesses were allowed to operate with a little more liberty, certainly not with the liberty to which they're accustomed and hopefully can actually survive, at the same time, we are experiencing our spike, those of us that were in less restrictive tiers, those who are in the most restrictive tiers, for instance, Los Angeles County, which not only as a county was in the most restrictive tier, but the city of Los Angeles themselves, Mayor Garcetti had threatened to turn off the power to businesses that were not shutting down, given that they have LEDWP under their control. So while we cannot show a direct linear connection between the activities of restaurants with modified dining indoors, the activity of gymnasiums with modified activity indoors, all these other entertainment centers and all the rest, while we cannot provide a direct linear connection between their modified activity and the spike in cases, we do know definitively that those counties that were already in the most restrictive tiers, which already had these businesses shut down, are experiencing the exact same kind of spike that we are experiencing.
Yeah, I think that's correct, and I think that kinda reinforces the, I haven't looked at, for instance, the LA County data, but I think most counties are like Placer where we're, large gatherings even outside of businesses seem to be, you know, to the extent that you can identify, right, where, I mean, I wanna go back to the point that our, you know, contact tracing has its limitations, but to the extent that you can identify the most common thing that we are able to identify is attendance at a large gathering, and I do think that seems to be driving a lot of the, I think I remember talking, hearing from LA that that was driving a lot of the spread in Los Angeles County as well as some of the other heavily populated counties that have been, like you said, in the purple tier, so obviously wasn't, you know, indoor dining at restaurants driving the spread there.
So you understand from a public policy standpoint what our frustration is as a board, is that we are being forced to look in the eyes of our small business owners because Walmart can stay open, Rayleigh's, where my son is now working about 45 hours a week, Rayleigh's can stay open, but the Chinese restaurant right next door to Rayleigh's can't. And so as we look in the eyes of these small business owners and they ask us these questions of what is it about my business that, you know, why do I have to shut down, we really have no definitive answers. And from a public policy standpoint, here we're being told that we have to take the steps necessary to decimate our economy, even though we don't have any idea if it will have any impact on the spread, and in fact, the opposite is true. We have evidence that those counties that have been on lockdown are experiencing the same spike that those of us who are more moderately open are experiencing. So just from a, the fact that our board has to take into consideration multiple data points, not just the existence of COVID, but multiple data points in order to make decisions on behalf of our residents, those who might be affected by COVID, the very small number of those, but the majority. To that, to that point, even, I've noticed that even with, and obviously, deaths are a lagging indicator, but even with the spike in cases, we in Placer County saw our peak month for deaths in August at .6 per day. It dropped to .5 in September, .4 in October, and so far in November, we're tracking a .3 deaths per day. And so are we seeing anywhere statewide or nationally yet where this spike in cases has yet led, and again, knowing that deaths are a lagging indicator, has yet led to a spike in deaths?
Yeah, I don't think so. I think you're accurate on the, you know, Placer, I'm more familiar with kind of the Placer County, you know, data on deaths, and we, it continues to, you know, we see, unfortunately, you know, several weeks, but I haven't seen a huge surge in those yet, but you're right, it's a lagging indicator, so something we'll continue to watch, particularly with the skilled nursing facility outbreaks, that's the concern is, you know, with those, that's where we've seen a lot of, unfortunately, the ICU hospitalizations and deaths, and so that's sort of the only caveat. But I think it's true for now that we haven't seen a huge surge in deaths at this point in Placer County or statewide. Nationally, I've, I think that's the case, and I don't know if Mike or others, they can, they can correct me if that's not the case, but I think you're right.
Okay. And then to that final point of where we do see the incidence of cases most closely correlating with deaths, and that's in that elderly population. Statewide, and this might get to the issue of how many people have actually been infected that we have no idea what percentage of our population. We, of course, when we, when we calculate a mortality rate, we only calculate against the number of positive test results that we have, not knowing how many people running around in society might have already had it, been completely asymptomatic, and therefore, how many cases there actually are, either in Placer County or statewide. But it might be comforting for folks to know that statewide of those identified cases for the population under the age of 65, the mortality rate is .52%, which means that 99.48% of the population that contracts the disease will survive. But here in Placer County, it is .18% in Placer County. So 99.82% of Placer County residents who test positive so far have survived. If we knew what the actual number of positive cases were, that of course would drive that mortality rate for this thing through the floor, even though it's compared to other infectious diseases fairly small already.
Yeah, I think that's the case as far as, you know, the numbers, I don't have them in front of me, but I think that sounds about right on the mortality rate. I would point out, because I think for, you're right, for a lot of people, you know, they have a relatively low mortality rate. I think what's concerning is with COVID in particular, as opposed to other pandemics like H1N1, is certain populations that can have a very high mortality rate. But even, you know, in our skilled nursing facility patients and other people with chronic health conditions, that rate does seem to be coming down too, and I think because of treatments and because, you know, we've gotten better identifying, you know, keeping people off ventilator, et cetera. So there's some hope going into this, right? This is going into the second wave that we, that things will be better than the last time. So I want to leave you, you know, kind of talking about the hope with the vaccine, that we're not in this, you know, indefinitely, I really do believe that the vaccine, the data on its efficacy will be helpful, but also hope that maybe this next wave won't be quite as lethal as the first wave was. So certainly hopeful, but I guess none of us really know until we've gone through this.
Thank you. Supervisor Gustafson?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Oldham. I had a number of questions, and the first one is, how, how do our cases compare to the statewide numbers? It's similar to what Supervisor Euler was asking, but I just want to see how our cases compare to the statewide numbers.
Yeah, when we look at some of the statewide metrics, especially the ones that they were using for the tier assignment, which the cases per 100,000 and the testing positivity rate were very, very similar to kind of the statewide average of what's happening. So we've been tracking, you know, close to the statewide average for a while now. So a lot of, what we're seeing right now, to I think Supervisor Euler's point, is, you know, a reflection, probably more of what's going on in the, you know, across the region than any particular, you know, local, you know, what's happening locally. I think we're seeing kind of the national and then statewide and regional trends, but we definitely look a lot more like the state as a whole. And then for other, I was mentioning kind of counties like ours, the medium-sized counties that have some rural and some kind of urban, you know, I think we're comparable to most of those counties.
Great, and the reason I ask that is, we all have constituents with different, differing viewpoints, some of which have been asking me if the county should do something more aggressive than the rest of the state. But if our numbers are tracking close to the state, then any rules coming down from the state should be sufficient at this point in time and make it more consistent, because people travel between counties, between regions, that sort of thing.
May I jump in? I have the data.
I thought you might have the data.
Rob, as of, as of last-
I was trying to be more simple.
As of last Thursday, anyway, I don't, this is just as of last Thursday, and the data I had as of last Thursday, we in Placer County, our cases per 100,000 was just under half the statewide average of cases per 100,000, so less than half, and our mortality on deaths per 100,000, we were less than one-third the statewide average of deaths per 100,000.
Thank you. Dr. Oldham, testing in the Sierra seems to be lagging, and I sent you an email this morning saying I had a report that it was, people were at least a week out to get an appointment for testing through OptimumServe and then another four to six days to get results. That was very concerning to a lot of folks, and I just wanted to see if that's comparable to other areas of our county, and is there anything else the county can do to supplement that testing?
Yeah, and I see Mike Cremaro is unmuted, so I'll let, he's, I know he's been up there at, kind of navigating that, up at Tahoe and Truckee, the testing. So Mike, anything you'd like to say on that?
Sure, so the Optimum Serve site on Donner Pass Road has been very successful from the start, right, with, with, you know, daily appointments filled, which has been impressive, and it's why we're there and why we're there at that location. I'm hearing lots of reports too about struggles to get those appointments. I do suspect that lots of folks are utilizing that site more in a surveillance capacity than for getting tested when they're symptomatic or exposed to a confirmed positive. So there might be, I don't want to say overuse, but much of that use is for self-imposed surveillance, maybe by an employer, maybe by the worried well. But given that demand, we requested an additional lane at that site, and the state testing task force granted us an additional lane. So I don't suspect, that won't be next week, but the following week, we'll be able to double the testing capacity at the Truckee location. And of course, I think we're on, we started the schools' testing site at the Ride Out Community Center. We started that maybe late, late October, and that's going well as well. I mean, it does increase a little bit of the capacity. It's there to eliminate those barriers for testing for school staff, teachers, students, again, symptomatic or exposed to a confirmed positive. Those sites, as you know, are open, you know, Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 12:00 AM. More limited capacity compared to the Optimum Serve sites, but our goal is, you know, as you know, those specimens are going to Stem Express, they're not going to the Perk and Elmer lab in Los Angeles County, so we should have a better turnaround time. And that's the other issue, right, is turnaround time. So as you know, with Quest, as Quest was inundated and the state decided to work with Perk and Elmer, that should certainly help. The goal of Perk and Elmer being 150,000 tests per day, I don't know when they'll reach that goal, that's a, that's a big number. And so, and of course, that turnaround time with the lab that's just getting started, it's gonna be a little slower than once they really get going. The challenge is, of course, is once they really get going, they're getting going during the purple tier time. And so, yeah, so I'm getting a lot of complaints from residents expecting a 24 to 48-hour turnaround, it's more like 48 to 72, and that's just because of the volume. So my message to residents is, you know, get tested when you're symptomatic, get tested when you're exposed to a confirmed positive, those are our priorities, and that's the best use of testing resources. And in terms of expectations with turnaround, to be patient, to make sure that when they fill out forms, they're doing their accurate email addresses where they're, or text cellphone numbers, so they get it directly correctly, we're having a little bit of problem with that. So I'm happy that the resources are there. I agree, it's not enough, the extra lane, we'll see what that does with the change in the weather, we'll see how that affects demand and access, and we'll sort of hope for the best. I'm really happy to be working with the Tahoe Forest Health District, they're hosting the site, they're gonna allow us to expand, which is really important. No one wants to move again, we've moved quite a few times. And then working with the Tahoe Truck Unified School District and providing the Ride Out Community Center, those partnerships are imperative for us to be, to have a presence and to get over the barriers. For example, finding nurses who aren't already employed to work has been a real challenge, and Tahoe Truck Unified School District has really come through for the community by providing the nurses that they have.
Yeah, I might just add a little, so thanks, Mike, for the update, and thanks for all the work you're doing on testing and on so many different fronts, but just to add a little bit, so provide some context, Mike mentioned we got approved for the additional lane at Truckee and actually, an additional lane at Roseville, which is now at the My View Activity Center. I was on a call with health officers in the region last night, and they were all a little jealous of that, right? So not everybody is getting granted, it's based on utilization, so it's kind of threading that needle. I'm hearing that we may have overshot and have a little bit of, too much demand at that one side in Truckee, so, but I know a lot of other people were denied based off of the underutilization of their sites, and so Mike was saying, yeah, we're probably changing our messaging a little bit, you know, for a while, we were encouraging people who are asymptomatic, if they had a concern, come on in and get tested, I think with the surge, where, you know, with previous surges, we've seen kind of a run on testing for a little while, so that, I think it's, just want to acknowledge, that's probably a little bit of a change in our messaging lately, but I do think with the additional lane, both the Truckee and we got additional lane at Roseville, that we'll, we should, we're hoping to be in good shape going, but we can ask for additional resources, in fact, we have. I will say, I'm getting some people from other communities saying, how come we can't get an Optimum Serve site too? And so that's really the reason, is we have to have enough demand to justify that and to get it approved through the state, and a lot of other communities, quite frankly, haven't, you know, including, you know, very few rural communities that have an Optimum Serve site. So it's, we're fortunate to have it, we'll continue to try to utilize it. It's a great partnership, I know we're allowing people from Nevada County and others to come, right? So it's a cross-county partnership, same in all of our sites, you know, we're not checking residency at the door.
Well, thank you. I know that a couple of the calls I received were from folks that have had it and have to, can't go back to work until they test negative and are having challenges that it's two weeks out till they'll have results that show they're negative. So that's the challenge, that we're keeping people out of jobs when they think they're recovering, they're asymptomatic, but have to wait for that negative test to get back to work. Dr. Oldham, we've also had, based on some media attention, a lot of information, a lot of constituents asking me about what has changed in our enforcement. And at least while our supervisors might not agree with each other on enforcement, have we changed anything with our enforcement techniques during, since March?
Yeah, I can speak to HHS and maybe talk and kind of talk about some of the other county-wide enforcement efforts, but- countywide enforcement efforts. But as it relates to, to HHS, you know, we have certain businesses, for instance, restaurants, tattoo parlors that we regulate. And we're, when we identify any of those businesses through citizen complaints or through, you know, our usual inspection process that have some room for improvement, we, you know, provide education, resources, support in those areas. We really haven't been taking a strong enforcement stance. Sometimes we, you know, an egregious case, we might, you know, make a referral, but I think those are limited. So for the most part, I think we just, and that hasn't changed at all. I think that's been the approach throughout the pandemic is really trying to lead with, with education and with, you know, providing resources. But I don't know if Todd has any additional thoughts from Mike.
Yeah, thanks, Rob. So Rob kind of talked about the HHS environmental health enforcement piece. I did, we were able to speak with the sheriff. Obviously, he wasn't able to join us this morning. But I think he's taking the similar stance that he has throughout this entire time period from March up to date. And it's really an education component on his part. The resources, if there are, as, as Rob attested, there are some egregious cases that we've dealt with. But as a whole, the sheriff has really taken a stance of education for our businesses, encouraging for social distancing. And that has not changed from kind of inception of this. And at this point, the sheriff isn't making any, any adjustments to that.
Well, one of the comments I've heard from constituents is that because we've changed enforcement there for the surge in cases. And I said, you know, we really haven't changed as far as I'm concerned. And we're still continuing on. The surges are based on the spread of the virus. Dr. Oldham, can you speak to ski areas? As we're looking at snow tonight and openings next week, I am having a lot of questions on ski areas.
Yeah. Well, there, I'll just say that there's been a lot of mixed messaging coming from the state around ski areas. I'm hopeful that it'll land somewhere soon because I know, for instance, Mammoth has already opened. And so we've been asking for a while about this. My understanding up until, you know, the last week or so was that the ski areas would be opening, could open under outdoor recreation guidance and that perhaps there would be some additional considerations coming out for outdoor recreation. There was an email that some counties received late last week about, from a department within the state saying that perhaps that wasn't the case, that ski areas couldn't open, again, with Mammoth already being open. So the, we're hearing from the state that that was probably an error, but that they are working on the, actually coming up with ski industry specific guidance. So no prediction on when that will actually come out. And so that's a change for, you know, and what we've been messaged, that there actually will be ski industry specific guidance. I haven't seen that or I don't know anyone who has, quite frankly. So, but maybe that's, will be, will be coming out. But in the interim, I think our ski areas are planning on opening. And my understanding and talking with all the health officers that have major ski resorts is, they've been working very closely with local public health. We really don't have any, any concerns with what they've been doing. I think they have, you know, solid plans for reopening safely. I think it's just a matter of kind of the working things out with the, with the state.
Well, thank you. And I appreciate your time and energy on this because I know that they've developed plans for each tier. And as I've said from the beginning, they closed before anybody made them close, when they didn't know what was going on with the virus.
Yeah.
Now, they are probably as prepared, if not more prepared than any of our other industries for a phased approach and, and reaction to what may happen with numbers. Another question I've received is on the tenting. And how many sides constitutes a tent, given colder temperatures?
Yeah. And this is another one. The state's been really busy updating guidance. And I think this, this emergency brake action probably slowed down some of, some of the other guidance updates that we're making. But probably, you know, the, the guidance around tents, I believe, was really designed for the summer months. And it talked about, you know, having three out of the four sides have to be up of a tent for ventilation purposes for that to be considered outdoor dining. I haven't heard anything else. I don't know if Mike has anything else to add on that. But obviously, you know, especially up at Tahoe Truckee, that, you know, that's not going to help very much on if the purpose of the tent is to address, you know, the, the temperature issues. I think right now, probably the guidance is, if you can't, if you can't do that, then it, then, then there's really no, no other alternative. But I will, we'll check to see whether, especially for the Sierra communities, whether there's any modifications in that.
Okay, thank you. And then, and the foothills as well. They expressed concern-
Yeah, yeah.
-this morning at Auburn Chamber of Medlars. And then three questions related to our grants real quick. And I just pause this for our board to consider. So when we approved the additional $5 million to support our businesses and nonprofits a couple of weeks ago, or a week ago, a lot has changed dramatically. And now we have businesses that are, that are being closed down again indefinitely for indoor, especially when you look at restaurants in the colder temperatures and bars and gyms. So I'd like us to at least talk a bit about that at some point today. And if there's any flexibility in how we rank those grants. Secondly, one of our larger businesses is just over the $5 million limit with more than 50 employees. And specifically said, am I not an anchor business? And why can't I be supported through your grant program? And it's excluding me, should I apply? And then the third question, can, and I think we've answered this one. Auburn Chamber has been working with a number of businesses to do a joint application to help their downtown. And we received a letter on that. So those are the three related to our Placer Shares program, which I'm so thankful we put together. But things have changed again dramatically since we did that.
Yeah. Let me touch on, on those three questions and kind of comments as well. So the criteria that was identified around the 5 million or less than 50 employees, it's really a small business administration criteria. So that's how they, the, kind of followed kind of the federal guidelines. What considered small business, however, as you mentioned, there's anchored, we also talked about anchor tenants in these areas. And just so happens, one of those is a restaurant. And so one of the things we are, I was just kind of conversing back and forth with, with Jane about how do we handle this? I will tell you, the, the level of interest on this second round is going to far exceed the $5 million that you have put towards this program. There's just no question about it. And as we mentioned, and, and the beauty of the first round was we had adequate amount of money for all of those businesses and nonprofits to actually receive dollars. It's not going to be the case this go around. And so what we had instituted and what we'd spoke about was a lottery system in the event that we were over that funding allocation. If there is continued interest, we do have some additional dollars from our CARES Act allocation, if you'd like to have a consideration of that again. And, and I would encourage chambers, they are most likely nonprofits, they would be submitting an application. And we will make considerations about that at that time. So I'm happy to have a conversation about additional dollars putting towards this effort, utilizing some additional CARES Act funds if we want to go a second round. I will tell you, there were two criteria, or two timeframes that we're dealing with. The first one is the business applications. This opened up on the 12th of November and it goes through the 20th. So on Friday is when the closure for those small businesses would be taking place for application submittals. And nonprofits, they kind of staggered this evaluation. Nonprofits opened up yesterday on the 16th and go through December 7th for their applications to be submitted. So I'm, I'm open, happy to have any conversations. I'll just, those are kind of the criteria we used. But as we're seeing, this is a continually evolving situation. And, and I think we've been flexible up to this point. So happy to have any questions or thoughts.
Well, I think the point that was made to me, and I think is self-evident, is that things changed dramatically yesterday, dramatically. And the grant applications are due Friday.
Yep.
And we have standards in those that may or may not have been fully thought through on our part, especially given the tiers changing. So I would be open to being more flexible, accepting all grants, requests, and then assuming that we get an indication of what more is needed. So we can lobby, you know, we need to look at what could happen in the next round of funding and how we might deploy that. The more information we get from these businesses on their needs and their specifics, even if they don't qualify this time, although, you know, I would question whether we could change that. But I understand we've published it for a week, so.
Well, there, there has been some publication. I think there are some individuals that have reached out and asked. And I know there have been some responses that they aren't potentially eligible at this indication. But there's no precluding you to opening that up past the 20th. And it could be obviously a cleaner way to do it. I just know that-
Yeah.
-even with those businesses that are eligible under the criteria we have, is going to exceed the dollar allocation that you've, you've put towards us at this point.
Well, given that we, we are under some sort of timelines to use the funds by the end of the year.
Correct.
We're not? Jane's shaking her head no.
We, we have some criteria to allow for an extension of those dollars.
Okay.
And so, under the current construct, that's the case. But our intent is, any program we have, we'd like to get, we're trying to get the money out as quickly as possible, which would mean-
Absolutely.
-getting it done before the end of the year.
And I want to thank staff and all the efforts to, to get the money out working. I, just these special circumstances, I want to encourage us to really understand what our business community needs from us. And that will help guide our thinking for additional funding and flexibility.
Yep.
Thank you. That's it. Sorry.
Thank you, Cindy. Supervisor Weigant, sorry. I apologize. I apologize.
I don't know what to say. Rob, first question is, on our updates, it appears that we may not be getting data from the hospitals as it relates to bed capacity. I'm thinking back to the governor's original articulation that the mitigation orders were for the purpose of making sure that we did not overwhelm our medical capacity for patients so severe that they actually needed it. Good to hear that you're having that conversation though. And it sounds like a very small percent of our medical capacity is needed for COVID here in Placer. So can you enlighten us as to what's going on there and what we can expect?
Yeah, I think we just had a change in the data source. And so we're hoping to get that back. You know, we're getting lots of questions about that. People looking at the dashboard and seeing that that data is coming from a different source. So we are getting data from the hospitals on the beds, but it's coming from a different source. So we do need to fix that. I agree. It's something we have, we're, we're tracking closely and we need to figure out how to display it for the public to see. So we'll, we'll work on that and, and get with our hospitals to see if we can, you know, get that, that data more reliably.
Yeah, thank you. And for me personally, I've learned with all of this that hospital capacity, for example, is not a fixed thing, that they have forever had a culture and patterns whereby they can adapt and modify their conditions to the needs. So to me, the, the measure is still, do we have capacity to deal with those patients who are in need of that, that kind and scale of medical capacity? Noting that, of course, we've learned a lot and it sounds like we're doing a much better job of treating patients who are more serious as compared to the asymptomatic. So thank you. Any update on, from the state youth sports? I get a lot of emails on youth sports.
Yeah, they, they were just about to pull the trigger, I think, on youth sports. We've been hearing it's coming soon, it's coming soon. And, but I think the emergency brake kind of delayed it, it being sent out. But that, that's one where we have kind of been involved in and know about kind of generally what to expect. I think they're going to potentially allow competition starting in, in January. And so I guess part of maybe why they're pausing is to see whether this, the new surge and the emergency brake impacts that at all. So there's still some discussion about that. But yes, I think it was done and maybe being tweaked a little bit. But I'm, I'm hearing from people at the state that they're still planning on getting that out soon. I don't, again, that's, not sure exactly what soon means. Thought it was going to be, you know, a couple of weeks ago. But I still think it's, it's forthcoming. That's, and, and kind of, it's different from the ski industry guidance where I think we've been involved in that and recognize that it's, you know, that's something they've been talking about for a while.
Yeah, thank you. One comment, maybe not for Rob, but County Executive's Office had a conversation, or part of a conversation with Sierra Business Council folks, Kristin specifically, talking about, I've, I've now learned that, I know of one company who has had their PPP loan forgiven, and several who are going through that process, which is emerging now, getting definition, I guess, from SBC about, or Small Business Association, SBA, as to how to go through that process. And then, but what she reported was that some of the small businesses, obviously in need of this kind of help, probably less sophisticated as it relates to their financial reporting capability, were rejected as to the forgiveness. But her impression and research was indicating that it was really a function of the businesses not really knowing how to answer the questions and/or some of the criteria from the federal government, not really targeting what, what the forgiveness strategy is. So if you could just keep an eye out for that and give me feedback and make sure you communicate with Kristin about all of that, I think it would be really helpful. Because whether or not those businesses in real need do or do not get forgiven, it's going to be a huge, it's going to have a huge impact on whether or not they survive, particularly in light of the direction the state policy is currently going.
Yeah. And just to speak to this, you know, we have, we have our Small Business Development Center. I think this is probably the appropriate group to provide guidance and support there. I know they have been tapped a little bit, helping on this Placer Shares and really answering questions, as well as businesses have guidance around either closures or so forth. But I'll talk with Sherry. I think they could be a great resource for folks if they have questions about it.
Yeah, my, my last question, and, you know, building on Kirk's comments, then tracking some of the data also. But whereas, I know a lot of this, Rob, is treatment improvement and, and the knowledge that we're achieving every day. But in Placer County, in the state of California, across the country, I know that whereas our daily spread currently are up, currently, our mortalities are significantly reduced on, if you look at mortalities per day. So that's a bright light, something to hang our hats on. But I'm connecting back to the governor's articulation as to the policy that these restrictive orders are predicated on not overwhelming our medical capacity. So lastly, early in our, my conversations with Dr. Parsonette, related to our seroprevalence testing that's now underway, she was talking about a patient way back in the spring that she had, who had both tested positive and negative. Dr. Parsonette, in her mind, was certain that this patient had in fact been infected. But they were, I don't think they were letting her out of her test tube so they could study it forever. But this weekend, Elon Musk talked about being tested, I think, four times. Not seroprevalence testing, of course, this is active testing. But do you have, just, do you have any insights as to anything that we can learn and be able to convey to our constituents with these kinds of questions?
Yeah, because I know, I know there's a lot out there about testing and information, you know, concern with testing. I'm not sure about Elon Musk and whether, what type of test, you know, that was. The antigen test in particular are not really meant to be used for people who are asymptomatic. And so I guess the answer is, it's complicated, what type of test and whether you were symptomatic or not. For most people, and that's why we're really trying to drive, you know, steer most folks to our, you know, our different testing sites that are all using PCR technology. It's very sensitive and very specific. And so it's highly, highly reliable. You know, the same PCR technology that we, you know, use in law enforcement and other areas, it has to be, you know, very predictable and reliable. So for the antigen testing, it's, it's less reliable. It still has, you know, a pretty high degree of reliability. There are some factors that impact that reliability, including, you know, where you swab, you have, you know, you think about the swabbing, you have to get material, you know, mucus or whatever, in order for it to find the virus. And so if you have a less experienced nurse or someone, then, then there, there are some kind of factors there at the collection that might impact it. There are some other factors. But in general, I think it, our testing is highly, highly reliable.
And your team's thought still is that, you know, for an active virus test, if you should- you should go if you have symptoms, because in the Musk interview, he mentioned that he had mild symptoms, which is why he tested. So, anyway, lastly, I just want to thank you and Michael and all of your team's tremendous effort. Been a real pleasure actually working with you guys on all of this as we craft our way through this landscape, but just want to make sure you get the thanks that you're due.
Great, thank you. Thanks for the support from everyone.
Supervisor Holmes, questions?
Yeah, I just want to echo that. Dr. Oldham and Michael, thank you for your leadership on this. I know, thank you for meeting with me yesterday to get a little bit of understanding. But getting back to the grant funding and extension, I think, Jane, did you have a comment? You were going to come down, and was there anything that you had to, as far as the grant funding and extension?
Thank you, Jane Christensen from the County Exec's Office. I've been texting madly with SBC during this conversation to find out when we might be able to essentially do a Placer Impact Grants plus round, knowing that the current round with the current board-approved eligibility criteria closes this Friday. She has said we could probably begin another ground, I'm sorry, another round after Thanksgiving, so we could certainly report back to the board with the details and formal approval on December 1st for a program that could go live on December 2nd, for those who may be precluded from the terms of the current grant program, given, again, it opened last Thursday. So, in an effort to continue to get this money out to help our community.
Thank you.
I could just insert one question to build on that while you're, I know people who do financial consulting that are helping some of these small businesses with the applications because they're small, internally they don't have that skill set, so I know a person who's actually, I think, gotten three PPP loans for clients. If any shared information as it relates to why people may not be getting forgiveness and if there's a function of how they fill out that request and things we can learn and share would, I think, help.
Certainly. As many of you know, we have a standing call with all of our regional economic development partners every Wednesday. Kristin York and her team are regular features on that call, and will certainly look to address those issues on tomorrow's call, as well as think about other opportunities to share that information out. And with regard to the eligibility, I'm sorry, the CARES deadlines, the board's action on October 27th to approve the administrative convenience effectively signaled to the state and the feds that we have spent all of our CARES money, which now gives us some flexibility to then use the freed-up general fund money as the board determines.
Thank you. Anything else Supervisor Holmes?
No, that's great. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jane, for the update, and we'll hear back from you then, probably at our next board meeting. Thank you, Dr. Oldham. I think one thing I just want to touch on, which I think is really important, and that is, we've had a lot of folks ask us about enforcement and the concern about enforcement, and I had my staff take a look at all of the counties, and, you know, most everybody has moved back to purple, to the most restricted tier. What's really interesting is that enforcement has not stopped the increase in the spread of the virus. So, we have counties like Monterey is one, where they've got violations for folks not wearing masks, other things. Those penalties are not stopping the spread of the virus, and we've seen the virus has increased, and that's really, it's really unfortunate, but we've been at this for eight months, and we've been asking people to social distance and wear face coverings, clean your hands, wash your hands, and do all those safety precautions, which throughout the state we're doing, and those cases have increased. The good news, to your point, Robert, is that the number of fatalities have not increased proportionately. That is a very good thing, but I want to encourage people, we need to continue to use the safety precautions as much as we can, and folks who are at risk have to be even more careful. We're going to continue to support our business community. We're going to continue to make sure that people get the PPE that they need or the PPP that they need, but this is, this is really challenging, and ultimately, at the end of the day, we've got to have some personal responsibility of taking care of ourselves, our family, and our friends, knowing that we can slow the spread, the spread is happening regardless of enforcement. And I want to share that message with folks because we can't force people to stop having their own individual responsibility, which I think we as Americans, we value that. It is very important that we as Americans still have individual responsibility and freedoms, and I'll speak for myself, I think that that's very important, and our residents believe that. At the same time, we also understand that we can take care of one another, be kind to one another, social distance, and do our part to not, to slow the spread, but also at the same time, be safe and support our local business community. Support folks who will lose jobs if they don't have that business, and we're going to reinvest our CARES funds to our business community and to our nonprofits to support our community, but we still need to support our business community. Go wear your face covering, be safe, shop, support our local businesses, because those are the folks that are making sure our workers have jobs, and those folks then can take care of their families and et cetera. So, Dr. Oldham, thank you for the update. This is, these are really challenging times, but at the same time, I know that we can continue to be safe while supporting our business community at the same time. So, with that, Supervisor Holmes?
I just wanted to encourage some of our restaurants have gift cards, and you should go out and buy some gift cards and maybe use them at the end of this, whenever we get through this, maybe in the summer, but I would encourage people to buy gift cards from their restaurants or breweries or any, any, any business like that that provides them.
Thank you. So, we are going to wrap this up. Todd, is there anything you wanted to add?
You know, I just wanted to share with you, I know, you know, back when this first started, we did some transitioning back to some remote working for employees. We're going to be sitting down with department heads and elected officials tomorrow to kind of talk about what opportunities and where do we see where remote working may need to be reassessed and looked at for a period of time. I know when we went through this initially, we kind of went on a two-week increment, so we evaluated kind of the condition of kind of where we were at the case rate and made adjustments as it goes along. So, we're going to talk about that over the next two days, probably have an idea if there are some areas where we need to maybe go to more remote or alternative working arrangement, we'll do that, really for the safety of not only the patrons we provide services to, but our staff as well. And this will be communicated via our website, social media to encourage that. And our, as we have done all along, promoting online service delivery is going to be important here. So, I just want to share that with you. I know we have, we had a case already where we had to actually shut down an entire group of folks because of a case that came up, and it just, the quarantine aspect honestly creates more of an issue about service delivery than if we're doing some social distancing things right now. So, I just want to share that with you, let you know over the next two days, kind of a strategy and approach we're doing across the organization. So, that's all I have for this morning.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, well, let's go ahead, and we're going to move to item 2A, which is our Tier Two Fee Deferral Program. And Michelle?
Good morning again. Michelle Kingsbury with Cedra, as well as Richard Moorhead, our Public Works Engineering Manager, together today to, our action requested today is to conduct a public hearing to consider the introduction of an ordinance which establishes Article 15-100, which is our Tier Two Fee Development Fee Deferral Program into Placer County Code and waive oral reading. This is an administrative item, as you're aware, in 2009, excuse me, Placer County, along with our local jurisdictions, the cities of Roseville, Rockland, and Lincoln entered into a memorandum of agreement which established our Tier Two Fee, which supports the construction of our Placer Parkway. In 2013, as well as 2017, that MOA was amended. The 2013 amendment established the Tier Two Fee Deferral Program. An introduction of this ordinance simply codifies that program within our county code. And the program, essentially, the parameters are, it allows for up to a 50% deferral of those Tier Two fees. Over a 30-year period, the developments would establish an extended-term CFD and other financing mechanism that may be approved by SPARDA that would pay off those deferred fees at the end of that term. The CFD uses, excuse me, should have the ability to implement that second bond issuance, which pays off any fee deferral balance. There is one requested amendment in terms of the ordinance, it's Section 4. Currently, as written, the ordinance states that once approved, it will be effective within 60 days. Our requested amendment is that it would be effective within 30 days. This is not a fee increase, and so that was a technical error, and we request if your board so chooses to move forward to approve that amendment as well. Again, this is an administrative item. We do expect Property 1A within the Placer Vineyard specific plan has expressed that they would be taking advantage of this fee deferral program. That would probably be our first applicant that comes through. And to date, I think we're only aware of the city of Roseville that has approved these fee deferrals, but we do expect as Placer Vineyard and our other developments that are subject to this fee would take advantage of this program as well. So, with that, Rich and I are available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. You answered my question, which was, are any of the cities who are part of the program doing the same? And it sounds like the city of Roseville is. All right. Thank you. Looks like there are no other questions from my colleagues. We'll open this up to the public. Any questions from the public?
[inaudible]
No, this is regarding this item, so we'll go ahead and close public comment and...
Wait, as amended.
Move approval as amended from Supervisor Holmes, and I'll second that.
Thank you very much.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
And we'll move to item 3A, which is the amended and restated Joint Powers Agreement for Pioneer Community Energy. And good morning, Dave. Nice to see you.
Good morning, Chair Gore, members of the board. Here this morning to introduce an item from Pioneer Community Energy. So, as you recall, on October 27th, members from Pioneer presented an informational item to your board, asking or discussing the potential to expand Pioneer into unincorporated Eldorado County and the city of Placerville. So, today, Pioneer is here requesting your board adopt a resolution approving Amendment Number One to the amended and restated Joint Powers Agreement for Pioneer Community Energy that would expand that JPA membership to include both Eldorado and the city of Placerville. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Don Eckert with Pioneer.
Thank you, Dave, and good morning, board.
Good morning.
So, we do have a brief presentation. Does this control it up here? Okay, thank you. So, as Dave mentioned, we were here last month to talk about the possibility of expansion, but we didn't have any numbers. Now, we've got the numbers to share with you and look forward to reviewing that. You know, I think I screwed this up last time, too.
Pushing buttons is difficult.
Really better at my other job. Okay. Tell you what, I'll just keep rolling here.
All right. There it is.
Oh, awesome. Okay. All right, just to be clear on the territory, thank you. Awesome. Thank you. That's hard as part of this presentation. So, thank you so much. So, just to be clear on the territory we're looking at, it's the, everything in blue would be the PG&E territory that would be eligible for consideration under Pioneer. So, we have Placerville separated because that's the only incorporated city, and then everything else would be unincorporated in the county coming over. I know that it was brought up last time with the board regarding Liberty Utilities and as well in Placer County, same issue here where that's something that, we don't have the infrastructure set up with them like we do with PG&E, but it's certainly on the table to consider in the future time. Okay. There we go. And just to get into the numbers, these are just the assumptions that were put in place. Again, we went through the Expansion Committee, of which Supervisor Holmes is on, to have the authority to hire a independent consultant to run this study. They used data from PG&E, from Eldorado County, as well as Placerville, to be able to run these numbers and come up with the recommendation. Just to give you the idea of the impact of this, we've spent a lot of time with, with all the city councils and as well as internally on this issue, but there's a reason why. It's a huge expansion, significant impact for Pioneer. On the left, you can see a number of customer accounts, so we currently have about 93,000 meters. This would take us to about 160,000 meters. Again, that's 70,000 meters. I look at this as 70,000 extra meters to spread risk across, keep our rates stable. Our energy usage goes from a current about 1, about 1,100 gigawatt hours to almost 1,800 gigawatt hours. That extra energy also gives us more leverage with, on the legislative and regulatory front, as well as power supply options. And our rate class composition, so our current setup is around 57% residential and then split up amongst the rate classes. Actually, Eldorado County is more heavier on the residential side, so when you blend them together, that number moves up to about almost 60% residential and 40% commercial industrial agriculture and street lighting. So, here's, getting into the numbers. So, this is the base case. What we assumed here was in the current scenario for FY '23, '24, and '25, we would keep our rates the same. You see a slight increase in operating revenues, that's just assuming a half a percent year-over-year load growth. We have our power supply positions. Many of our positions, three years out in this timeframe, are hedged, but we do have some unhedged positions that were mark-to-market, if you will. Our other operating expenses would include data management fees for our per meter cost, as well as PG&E billing fees and facilities and staff. And then, we do have a debt service. Our last debt service to the county would be in FY '23 to retire that line of credit that we used when we first launched. And in the base case scenario, I look at Pioneer, and it's still in a stable place. It's building reserves, it's keeping the, we're not talking about rates. All is good. So, it's not like we have to expand to maintain a healthy utility, but with expansion, we looked at the operating revenues, again, assumed the rates the same, but the incremental load. Power supply, now, none of this is hedged, so we took that all to mark-to-market on the power supply positions. Other operating costs, so most of the infrastructure is in place. When we look to bring on Eldorado and Placerville, we're looking at mostly data management fees, which is on a per meter basis, probably looking at two FTEs and some, and some minor marketing expenses, so we're not looking at a tremendous jump in our other operating costs. Again, our debt service retires in '23, and the bottom line difference on the, on this base case is around $8 million a year for the utility versus, in expansion versus the current case. Again, we don't need to expand, but I think this puts us in a much stronger spot as we face price spikes, uncertainty with the power charge difference adjustment and what the new economy is going to look like. It puts us in a much better place to absorb those shocks and keep our rates stable and start delivering on other value plays beyond rates, such as incentivizing businesses, biomass, and PSPS mitigation. And this would just be a projection of our reserves. In our current state, we would go into this expansion with around 24 million reserves, and the green bar would be the impact of the expansion. The blue bar would be with the current case. Again, we're still building reserves, but it just gets us to our goals faster, gives us a lot more shock absorption. We also looked at three stress tests. So, the first one was, what if we go to Eldorado County, the messaging goes poorly, and we have a 25% opt-out? So, in our current case, we left the numbers the same. We have currently 11% opt-out, and we left that the same, but in an expansion, if it were to, again, go poorly on the messaging, you can see that the bottom line, instead of being about $8 million a year, would be about 6.8. And that makes sense, because even though you have less revenues, you also have less power supply costs to serve. A second stress test would be, what if we increase power supply costs by 20%? This would be something that, in a short term, could, you could see those power supply spikes, and when you look at this and say, none of my positions are hedged with Eldorado when we bring them online, is this a bad case? So, I look at the current situation, and, you know, we're not 100% hedged either, so this would impact us as well. So, if power supply prices go up 20%, we're in the red, and we're looking at either raising rates or being, accepting that we're going to dip into reserves. With expansion, the numbers aren't great either, but it's a better case than in the current. And then, in the stress test number three, this would be a situation where, what if PG&E rates go down, of which I need to stay competitive? rates go down, of which I need to stay competitive, unlike, let's say, Roseville Electric where someone can, the rates can go up, and they either have energy efficiency options or they need to move out of the service territory. My case, if I'm not competitive with PG&E, it takes you about 90 seconds to opt-out. So I have to stay competitive. And if we were to, let's say, lower our rates to stay competitive with PG&E, or we had to lower our rates because the PCIA jumped out of control. And in this case, we would be 7% drop in our current rates, which are already 6% below PG&E, including the increase in the PCIA in May. You can see in this case, which very likely could happen, in the current case, we're, again, dipping into reserves. In expansion, and I think this is my strongest play for expansion, is that if this case were to happen, we're not dipping into reserves, we're not talking about rates, and we're continuing to move the business forward. So we went through the base case, three stress tests, and we're still in better shape in expansion versus the current state. So that's the finance question, is should we move forward? The impact assessment study does say yes from a financial perspective. On governance, we did present this last time that we would land with a nine-member board. We're still there. So the amended JPA includes that. Voting shares rarely comes up, but there was an instance with Pioneer where we did go to voting shares. It was regarding rate setting, so a significant issue. On the current side, you can see for you folks in Placer County, it's a definite change in the voting share structure between the current of 49% going down to 29, of which Eldorado would come in as the number one voting share. I suspect that they were going to be high until I saw the numbers. I didn't know for sure, and so they are the number one voting share. I will point out that we spent a lot of time with them to make sure that we are recruiting like-minded folks, so we're not introducing, you know, conflict to the board, especially if they're going to have the number one voting share. And the other point I would make is, if something were to go haywire, you still have, the founding members still have 60% of the voting share versus the new folks. And timelines, so we did meet with the Auburn Council on the 9th. They did approve this. Rockland got moved then to December 9th, actually, so this is a recent, we haven't updated this slide yet. And then, of course, we met with Eldorado and Placer County yesterday and last night, so we're, they voted to move forward. And so if we were to have approval today, we would be about halfway there to the eight members of getting this to move forward. We have to then take this to the Pioneer Board after all the member agencies have approved this, to vote to amend the JPA as well as to approve the amendment to our implementation plan. We'll file that plan with the CPUC at the end of this year. And there'll be about a 90-day wait, of which we will not do anything, not by power, spend any money on the expansion until that vote from the CPUC comes back positive, and look forward to a lot of activity then next spring if it does. So our staff's recommendation is to move forward with this amendment to the JPA and approve the expansion for all the reasons we've talked about. I think it's good for this utility, it's good for the ratepayers, and it starts to put us in a financial position to start delivering on plays beyond just rates. With that, happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Don. I have one question, and that is, is there a cost that has to be paid to PG&E to allow these folks to come under the CCA?
The CCA? No, there is not. Yeah, so it's, basically, it's, through the CPUC regulations, we go through the process to file the paperwork. CPUC says yes. The only real cost would be, not in dollars, but in time. So you have to, once you, if we get this done by the end of this year, we have to wait a year to bring them online, but there's no cost to PG&E to do that.
So unlike if Roseville Electric wanted to expand their territory, right, and they're an established regular utility, they would have to pay to take over PG&E service area. But because this is a CCA, that's the difference.
And because we're only looking at the generation side of this. So in PG&E's case, they don't make money on the generation side, so it makes it a lot easier conversation. But let's say Roseville were to go into Rockland, for instance, and they want to buy the wires. PG&E does make money on that, and you're going to have a major battle to try to get those wires, and it won't be cheap.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Supervisor Yular?
Yeah, so that my colleagues know, I, in, in theory, in principle, I support this expansion. The issue for me has been, and as was discussed at our Pioneer, our last Pioneer meeting, the issue for me is essentially the equity that Eldorado is showing up with, and what are we asking of them? As our board knows, because we initiated this entire process, we absorbed debt, we had all the risk, our ratepayers, existing ratepayers in Placer County have mostly paid off that debt, we've built up reserves, all by our ratepayers paying higher rates to retire that debt and build up those reserves. And under this scenario, Eldorado County customers get to come in with all the benefit, none of the risk, and pay exactly the same rates that our existing residents are paying. And that just doesn't seem fair to me. We absorbed the risk, we got it up and going. It's a little red-hennish to me, where after all the work is done, they want to show up and eat the bread. And I want to welcome them in, but I want to do it knowing that we have been fair to our existing ratepayers who have absorbed the risk and worked, paid higher rates than they otherwise would have if we didn't have the debt. And higher rates than they otherwise would have if we didn't have the reserves we had to build up, and Eldorado then just shows up against the benefit of all that. And so while I want to welcome them in, I believe there needs to be some kind of equity that, where, whether it's they have a, Eldorado has a slightly modified rate over time, or as we in Placer have the opportunity to create a larger spread, a greater differential between Pioneer's rate and PG&E's rate, maybe as that spread grows in Placer County, it doesn't grow as aggressively in Eldorado County, something until we get to a point where demonstrably we can say, okay, Eldorado County has now paid their price to join, and now it can all be equal, as opposed to it just all being equal day one. So that's my only concern with this whole thing. As far as the stress tests are concerned, stress test number two, I believe, was the one based on the assumption of an automatic spike in power costs of 20%. We've not experienced anything along those lines. Stress test number three, I believe, was predicated on somehow PG&E's rates going down to, by 7% or something along those lines. We don't experience that either. So while it's nice to show a doomsday hedge, we just, the real world doesn't indicate that we will face something like that. Now, the PCA charge, of course, huge concern. This is the, where our investor-owned utilities have gotten the Public Utilities Commission to essentially put onto CCAs what they consider their stranded assets. And so our customers are paying for the investor-owned utility stranded assets through this PCA charge. And if it weren't for that PCA charge, our price point differential to PG&E would be huge. And this 10% loss rate that we've experienced would be zero. So I'm optimistic that the model is sound, the model that our board adopted years ago to move forward with Pioneer is sound. We will continue to see the benefit of our board having taken the risk with our partner cities in absorbing the debt. We will retire that debt here, I believe, within the next year. It will be completely retired. Our reserves, total reserve assets are now up to 25...
About 24 million.
25, 24 million. So our ratepayers have done that. We haven't done that, our ratepayers have done that. All I'm saying is I think that it's only fair that if Eldorado County is coming in representing 40% of total ratepayers-ish, that they be asked to contribute something from a percentage standpoint to those reserves in the form of a slightly modified rate for their, not so much that it would dissuade them from leaving PG&E to join us, but just to build some equity. That's all, that's my only point.
Can I ask a follow-up? I know you have a comment, Supervisor Holmes, but my question is, did the Pioneer JPA have that conversation?
So it is actually on our board agenda for Thursday.
Okay.
So we will talk about it. It's a fair question. And the issue I'm having with defining the buy-in, if you will, is no other CCA has done that in an expansion. That doesn't mean we can't. It just means I don't have a benchmark to market to as far as what is considered fair. So I need to have that conversation. We're going to have it on Thursday afternoon to kind of go through that and give me some parameters or help me with that definition, and then we can move forward on that issue.
Thank you. Supervisor Holmes?
Yeah, you answered my question, but I have one question that other CCAs have expanded without this equity issue. To me, it seems like it's just like any other business that started up and invested money. I borrowed money to start my business. But I wouldn't ask all the new customers that came in that they need to help, you know, help pay down that. It doesn't make sense. It's just an expansion of more customers, which brings in more revenue, builds our reserves, and puts us in a better financial position for buying power.
And one argument you could make on that would be, they are bringing 8 million more to the table and 70,000 meters to spread that risk around. That's one definition of the buy-in, and look forward to other...
So I don't know how you would work out an equity issue. It just makes sense to me.
Supervisor Wigan?
Yeah, just a thought, acknowledging that I'm happy that it's not one of my committee assignments left to sit. I was thinking that, so we have these reserves, they were created by a particular block of people. Maybe there, maybe it doesn't have to be a surcharge on the new block, but maybe narrowing of the way the reserves would benefit the existing blocks, so that, just a thought.
It's a very good thought of somehow restricting the current reserves to what they can't be used for. Excellent thought. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor. Wigan, Supervisor Gustafson?
You stole that from me. I was gonna...
The CPUC person, yeah.
Yes, I was gonna suggest the same thing, because I ran a water sewer district for a number of years, and that's how we dealt with it, is we reserved, the reserves that had been built up by the existing customers were then dedicated to those. So if you had to dip into those, your existing customers, if there's a way to do that, that might be a...
Great minds.
Great mind, thinking alike. And I will just again say, I'd love to see expand, to take in some more Placer County customers. Just saying.
We're working on it. Thank you.
Then that voting might change as well. We have some big users here.
We hope this winter.
Excellent.
All right, Supervisor Holmes?
Well, I just want to expand on that. So the idea Supervisor Wigan and Supervisor Gustafson come up with is that the reserves that are in place today would only be used to benefit Placer County customers and people, members of the...
Payden.
Of the CCA, and then the new reserves that are generated from Eldorado County and Placerville would be dedicated to them.
That is definitely one thought we could look at and probably amend the reserves policy and that. Sorry. Thank you.
No, I'm sorry. My apologies. You can set, you could potentially set the reserves so that you could borrow from those reserves and be paid back by those Eldorado County customers, because obviously it's going to take them a while to rebuild that up. So there might be a way to borrow from those.
As long as you track it and pay it back.
Yeah, because I was going to bring up the other question is, in theory, our only reason to have to draw down reserves is if we see our energy prices, that our acquisition price is spiking, and we don't want to have to raise rates. So if we are borrowing from Placer's reserves to stabilize Eldorado's, at some point, are you not going to have to have a differential in rates in order for Eldorado's to pay back Placer?
Absolutely. It could happen, absolutely.
I mean, because at some point, Placer's reserves would be fully funded, Eldorado's would not be, therefore, that would, in theory anyway, be reflective. So it's really taking what I was saying and just saying, we're going to defer that conversation to some point in the future where Placer's rate will be reflective of the fact that Placer's reserves are fully funded, Eldorado's rate will not be able to lower to reflect fully funded. So instead of them coming in at a rate differential, what we're saying is, we recognize that at some point in the future, there will likely be a rate differential, which I'm fine with as long as, since I won't be around, as long as this board is committed to continuing with that kind of a policy. And I can see where from a marketing standpoint and a buy-in standpoint from Eldorado County, not having that differential right up front might make it a little easier on the transfer of customers away from PG&E over to Pioneer with a higher percentage. And at some point in the future, when we are fully funded in our reserves. So again, my only concern is, as long as this board understands going in, that was our intent, and we intend to stick with it when push comes to shove and we do show a rate differential. Does that, because you had expressed at our last Pioneer meeting, the barrier to entry that it gets created just with the optic of the higher rate, does that help you address that, do you think?
Absolutely. And I think if we look at even future expanses, expansions, if we set the precedent now for a buy-in, it makes it tougher when I'm competing with other CCAs.
Right.
Future expansion, so that's a great solution. And if we have to go to a point where Eldorado's has a different rate, it's probably a cost-of-service type approach, and it's very defendable with the CPUC as well.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. Let's see.
Good solution. I want to thank my colleagues from Districts 2 and 5 for coming up with that. It makes me feel a lot better. Thank you.
All right, let's see. We need to open it up to the public. Any public comments either here or on Zoom on this item? Looks like there is somebody on Zoom.
Bill, go ahead and unmute your mic and give your comments, please.
Hey there. Just, I'm Bill Holden with the Rockland City Council, and just wanted to speak in favor of the expansion. I do think that the financial benefits are significant. I would also speak in favor of us segmenting this 24 million to the benefit of the Placer ratepayers who put in for it. I think in future years, the net proceeds from Pioneer's operations will be the result not of the Eldorado ratepayers, but of all the ratepayers of Pioneer. And those proceeds would benefit the entirety of Pioneer, but, but, once Eldorado has joined, the Placer ratepayers will still be paying 60% of the rates, the Eldorado ratepayers will be paying 40%. But the net revenue from those years will be generated not only by the Eldorado ratepayers, but by the Placer ratepayers. And that kind of pool going forward be, would be appropriate to be shared, you know, for all ratepayers in that Pioneer. So I encourage the drive to put aside the 24 million, and what will be generated in the future would be, would be from all ratepayers, not just the Eldorado ratepayers. I also, there has been some discussion of changing the voting system, and I'm, you know, I think the one time that weighted voting has been used, it resulted in a lower rate for ratepayers. But for Rockland, whether it's eight entities with eight votes, all equal, or the current weighted system, it doesn't matter much to us, although it would reduce the Placer County membership by one.
Thank you, Councilmember Holden. Appreciate your input. Anyone else? All right, let's go ahead and close public comment, and Supervisor Yular? Nope? You turned it off.
Didn't know if there was any, necessarily any action required of us as opposed to, I mean, does, is, does our board want to provide clear direction to your representatives on Pioneer as to what the board's preference is? And if so, my request... And if so, my request would be that a motion come from a non-Pioneer board member to direct action on behalf of our, of your representatives on that committee.
Well, we do, yes, so we have, we have two items. And we have one, which is, consider adopting this resolution to move forward with Eldorado and Placerville.
Yeah, I need that to be able to move forward with our board.
Yes, so we need that. Why don't, why don't we take that, and then we can have further conversation? So motion by Wigan, and I'll second that. So all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And then we can talk about further direction from our board if we would indeed like to direct one of our members to- go to the, I mean, it sounds like-
I want to be clear that both, both of us hear our board's direction.
Well, and it sounds like there's agreement that that would be basically a really good way to address this concern that you have. Okay. I think we've got agreement? Heads nodding? All right. So you heard. Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate the update.
Now that I've figured this out, I look forward to coming back. Thank you.
Okay, let's see. We are now going to go to our department items, and we have Item 5A, which is Purchase of Charge Point Electric Vehicle Charging Stations and Approval of Charge Rates at Various County-Owned Facilities. And it looks like we have staff online. Good morning.
Good morning, Chair Gore and members of the board. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. I'm here today for the following action request. Approve the purchase and installation of six Charge Point electric vehicle charging stations for various county-owned facilities, the associated PDU software, and a five-year warranty in the amount of $172,000. And to adopt a resolution establishing the initial charge rates for the charging stations based on a cost-recovery method. We currently have electric vehicle charging stations located at various county-owned facilities. The stations are outdated, slow to charge, and lack the technology to allow the county to monitor the utilization and to charge for use. Capital improvement staff have been exploring cost-effective approaches to update these stations and increase the charging capacity. We have selected Charge Point stations and their software application to replace and add stations at the PCGC Community Development Resource Center, where we propose adding one single station and replace one dual-port station at PCGC Auburn Justice Center, where we would replace one single port station, at 1,000 Sunset Building in Rockland, where we would replace one, replace two dual-port stations, and at the Santucci Justice Center, Building B, where we would add one dual-port station. The new stations and software will result in additional capacity, functionality, functionality and use for the user to monitor the status of their charging, pay for the charging use using a mobile application, increase availability of stations by encouraging users to move their vehicles once charging is complete, and provide the county ongoing monitoring electricity usage and for automatic funds collection. The system will allow the county to easily adjust rates and charges as needed. Staff collected data and did an analysis to determine what was needed to recuperate expenditures. The recommended fees are consistent with local area fees and are less than an equivalent gallon of gasoline. Staff recommends the following charge rates to recover an estimated annual cost of $23,400 a year. The recommendation is an initial charge of $2, and then an hourly charge of $1.50. And if your vehicle has not moved after the charge is complete, a $3 an hour charge. Following the installation of charging stations and further evaluation of use and costs, the charge rates may require adjustments to adequately recover our costs. At such time, staff will return to your board with recommendations. In addition to approving the charges and methodology, it is requested that your board approve the purchase of six electric vehicle charging stations, including the PDU software application and the five-year warranty. Staff initiated a negotiation with Charge Point that resulted in a proposed agreement that is consistent with procurement policy. The estimated total project cost is $172,000, including $117,988 in equipment and construction, and $54,000, $54,012 of project management fees, contingency, and overhead. Funding in the amount of $184,683 is included in the final fiscal year 2021 budget. Funds received from the PDU system are anticipated to offset maintenance, software, and electricity charges. Attached is the spreadsheet used to determine the proposed rates and the resolution for the recommended charge rates. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Genevieve. Supervisor Gustafson?
Yes, I wanted to understand how these rates that, that you're projecting compare to residential rates? In other words, why would somebody pay to charge here versus charging at home?
It's difficult for us to compare what the charge rates are at home, because everybody's charge rates are different depending on where their electricity is at. But based on charge rates in other areas around the city of Auburn and in the city of Roseville, they're very comparable. They vary as much from, anywhere from 50 cents to a dollar, to up to $5 an hour.
Okay. So, and just, just so, when we're looking at our projections for revenue from this, that we're realistic in that if you charge at home, you can select your hours of time of usage and that sort of thing, so.
Correct. And the thought is that people will probably charge at home, and they would only charge here for a fill-up, or just to get them to a meeting. And then also with the, with the changing of the system, we would be able to, the, the charges would actually, the stations would show up on the map now, the charge map, so the public could use them more readily, because they'll be able to see them. Whereas right now, our old system's outdated, so you can't see them on the maps.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Looks like there are no other questions from my colleagues. We will open this item up to the public. Do we have any questions from the public? All right, we'll close public comment and move it back to our board for action.
Second?
Motion by Supervisor Holmes, second by Supervisor Gustafson. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Item 6A, New Classification of Communicable Disease Assistant. Good morning, Kate.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'm Kate Sampson with your Human Resources Department. This morning, I'm requesting from you introduction of an ordinance to amend your schedule of classifications and compensation ordinance related to a new classification of communicable disease assistant. As you know, the county has made use of contact tracing during the recent COVID-19 pandemic. To immediately address the emergency situation, the county has made use of a client services assistant until a more specific classification could be created for contact tracing duties. The CEO has now established a new unclassified classification of communicable disease assistant that focuses on those contact tracing duties. Individuals in this classification will be used on an extra-help basis, and the rate of pay is recommended to be consistent with the currently-used client services assistant. So that concludes my comments, but I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Kate. And Kate, looks like there are no questions, and we'll open it up to the public. All right, we'll bring it back for action.
Move, approval.
Second?
A motion by Supervisor Wigan, second by Supervisor Gustafson. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And next, we have closed session. County Council?
The board was now adjourned to close session to consider two items of existing litigation and to consider conference with labor negotiators.
And we'll have County Council report out from closed session.
The board meant in closed session to consider the item of existing litigation titled Joshua Rice versus County of Placer. The board heard a report and authorized defense of named defendants. On B, Placer County Deputy Sheriff's Association versus County of Placer, the board heard a report and provided direction. On conference with labor negotiators, the board heard a report and provided direction. This concludes the report out of closed session.
Thank you, Karen. And with that, our board is adjourned until our next meeting, which is Tuesday, December 1st.